Okay.
Good morning, everyone. We will be getting started shortly. Please be sure to turn on your closed captioning as individual captioning is available. If you are viewing this meeting through a mobile device, you can access closed captioning through the Chicago Park District's YouTube page to view the meeting with captions. A link to the Park District YouTube page is on the screen and can also be found in the chat. Would everyone please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This public hearing is being held at eleven twenty AM this Wednesday, February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, regarding the proposed Chicago Park District twenty twenty-one supplemental appropriation ordinance. Notice of this public hearing was published Friday, February fourth, in the Chicago Sun-Times, a newspaper of general circulation within the Chicago area, and was made available on the Chicago Park District's website. Additionally, three copies were available for public inspection in the office of the secretary. Additionally, this meeting is being held virtually via an electronic platform to protect the public's health and in adherence with Senate Bill twenty-one thirty-five, Article fifteen, Section fifteen dash five, the amended Open Meetings Act five Illinois C S one twenty, Section seven subsection E four, and in continued observance of the governor's orders pursuant to COVID nineteen Executive Order number one hundred and the gubernatorial disaster proclamation filed on February fourth, twenty twenty-two. As such, the district has deemed it necessary to continue to hold its meetings virtually. Will the secretary please take a roll call of the commissioners?
Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Commissioner Netski?
Here.
Commissioner Munoz?
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Here.
And Vice President King?
Here.
Quorum is present, however, please be advised that this hearing is informational and for the purposes of hearing public input. Let the record reflect that interim General Superintendent and CEO Rosa Escareño is also in attendance.
This hearing is hereby called to order. We will now open the hearing to public discussion. Will the secretary please call the names of those who have signed up to speak?
For the record, we have not received any requests to speak or written testimony related to the proposed twenty twenty-one supplemental appropriation ordinance. So we will have no speakers today on this.
At this time, Chief Financial Officer Steve Lux will address the commissioners.
Good morning, Vice President King, Commissioners, Interim Superintendent and CEO Escareño. For the record, my name is Steve Lux and I am CFO of the Park District. Before you today is a request to approve an ordinance to supplement the twenty twenty-one annual appropriation ordinance as a result of the pension legislation that was passed by the Illinois General Assembly in May of twenty twenty-one and signed by the governor in August of that year. The supplemental appropriation ordinance accounts for the required additional supplemental contribution to the park employees annuity and benefit fund in the amount of forty million dollars to assist in stabilizing the pension fund. That payment was required to be made by November first, twenty twenty-one. The payment was made on time by utilizing thirty million dollars of funds that were set aside in the long-term liability reserve, which was part of the district's general fund. And that thirty million dollars is reflected in the supplemental ordinance. The additional ten million dollars of monies was held in the parking garage revenue fund that was part of the proceeds from the district's sale of our administration office condo here at five forty-one North Fairbanks. That fund is not annually appropriated. The long-term liability reserve was established as part of the original pension reform legislation, which was passed in twenty thirteen and was subsequently deemed unconstitutional and overturned in twenty eighteen. The original pension reform legislation required the district make a large supplemental contribution in twenty nineteen. But since the twenty thirteen legislation was overturned, those monies were not spent and we then used them as required by the twenty twenty-one pension legislation. This extra supplemental payment was not considered when we submitted the original twenty twenty-one budget in the fall of twenty twenty because we were not sure when we would be able to submit our pension legislation to Springfield. Initially, the district believed the twenty twenty-one appropriation was not required to be supplemented since the payment was mandated by state law. But after recent discussions with outside counsel, we are recommending to the board that it is the best interest to officially supplement the budget. As this is the public hearing for the supplemental appropriation ordinance, the board will be requested to vote on this matter at the regular board meeting. Are there any questions?
If there are no questions, do the, any of the commissioners have any comments that they would like to make? Okay, thank you. That concludes the public hearing. Can I have a meeting to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. That concludes the public hearing. The hearing is now adjourned. We will now move on to our regular board meeting. Since we recited the Pledge of Allegiance earlier, we will move on with the rest of the meeting. If you are viewing this meeting through a mobile device, you can access closed captioning through the Chicago Park District's YouTube page to view the meeting with captions. A link to the Park District's YouTube page is on the screen and can also be found in the chat. On this day, Wednesday, February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, at eleven twenty-eight AM, the regular board meeting of the Chicago Park District is being held remotely in an effort to protect the public's health and in adherence with Senate Bill twenty-one thirty-five, Article fifteen, Section fifteen dash five, the amended Open Meetings Act five Illinois C S one twenty, seven subsection E four, and in continued observance of the governor's orders pursuant to COVID nineteen Executive Order number one hundred and the gubernatorial disaster proclamation filed on February fourth, twenty twenty-two. As such, the district has deemed it necessary to continue to hold its meetings virtually. Will the secretary please take another roll call of the commissioners?
Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Commissioner Netski?
Here.
Commissioner Munoz?
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Here.
And Vice President King?
Here.
Quorum is once again present. Let the record reflect that interim General Superintendent and CEO Rosa Escareño is again in attendance.
Thank you very much. This meeting will please come to order. First on the agenda, under General Business, certificate of publication of the notice of public hearing being held on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two at eleven twenty AM concerning the proposed Chicago Park District twenty twenty-one supplemental appropriation ordinance. This will be marked as received and filed by the secretary. Next, under General Business, resolution honoring State Senator and United States Congressman Harris W. Fowle.
Uh, yes, good morning.
I'm, and I apologize. It's, it's Faywell. Sorry about that. But please go, please go ahead, interim superintendent.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, I would like to introduce Larry Labiak, who is the disability, disability policy officer for the Chicago Park District. On behalf of the Park District, he will be reading the resolution honoring State Senator and United States Congressman Harris W. Faywell um, and, and get into the contributions and the ways that he throughout his lifetime supported parks and recreation and advanced accessible, uh, accessibility for all people with disabilities throughout the park, uh, system and beyond. So, um, and I also want to just, uh, say that Larry Labiak does a lot of great work on behalf of uh, the residents of Chicago and all of our patrons throughout the Park, um, district to ensure uh, all of our accessibility policies are implemented. So with that, Larry Labiak.
Larry, you may be muted.
And now the true fun begins. My apologies for that. Good morning, Commissioners, Vice President King and interim superintendent and CEO Rosa Escareño. Thank you for those kind words of introduction. We are honoring Harris W. Faywell today. This is a gentleman who while in the Illinois State Senate from nineteen sixty-three to nineteen seventy-seven was instrumental in the formation of special rec associations. Even today, some folks don't realize that special recreation associations are an Illinois phenomenon. We are one of the few states uh, in the United States whereby communities pool their resources uh, to create economies of scale that better serve people with disabilities. Uh, you can see it in our fifty-plus-year history of Special Olympics competition. Of course, the first competition at Soldier Field back in nineteen sixty-eight. You can see it in the development of, uh, the Park District's adaptive sports program that doesn't exist fifteen, twenty years ago, and now we can boast hosting multiple regional and national championships. You can see it in the escalation of programming offerings for people who are blind uh, or have low vision, individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. And all of this goes back to legislation introduced and supported by a handful of state senators and congressmen such as Harris W. Faywell. This support led to the passage of a special recreation levy, which the Park District began taking advantage of about sixteen years ago. Today, it brings forth to the Chicago Park District about fourteen million dollars that we can use on a, on a regular basis annually in perpetuity to support and build our programs. To the extent that the Park District in the last fifteen years has expanded uh, its special recreation staff from about fifteen back in two thousand and five to some one hundred and seventy-five today. From serving individuals with disabilities at fifteen sites across our vast district to some twenty-five sites today, to the opportunities to expand more uh, uh, reach and as well to serve as many as three thousand individuals with cognitive disabilities during our annual spring games. And so now the resolution to honor this great man, Harris W. Faywell. Whereas the Chicago Park District exists to provide recreation and leisure services for all residents with disabilities who live in Chicago. And whereas State Senator and United States Congressman Harris W. Faywell served in the Illinois State Senate from nineteen sixty-three to nineteen sixty-seven and was named the outstanding freshman State Senator by the Illinois Press Association. And whereas State Senator and United States Congressman Harris W. Faywell during his time in the Illinois Legislature sponsored legislation that enabled and promoted the formation of, by park districts and municipalities of special recreation associations to serve children and adults with disabilities throughout the state. And whereas State Senator Harris W. Faywell also sponsored legislation that amended the park district code to authorize a specific tax levy for SRAs and the Chicago Park District that provided a reliable source of annual funding earmarked to enhance programs and their reach. And whereas said levy funding has become a primary and essential Chicago Park District's special recreation programs resource, facilitating an eventual four-fold budget increase and further expanding recreation opportunities for and transforming the lives of thousands of people with disabilities and their families throughout the city of Chicago. And whereas State Senator and United States Congressman Harris W. Faywell, who passed away November eleventh, twenty twenty-one, strove to represent and serve all people, applying his intelligence, patience, empathy, and understanding toward the betterment of humanity and indisputably enhanced the lives and futures of all people, including those with disabilities in the state of Illinois during his tenure. And whereas the Illinois Park and Recreation Association formally honored the late State Senator and United States Congressman Harris W. Faywell on January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, in concert with SRAs and park districts across the state, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Chicago Park District recognize the late State Senator and United States Congressman Harris W. Faywell for his contributions to and support of the Illinois Parks and Recreation and therapeutic recreation community for the past fifty-eight years. And be it further resolved that a suitable copy of this resolution be filed by the Secretary of the Chicago Park District on this sixteenth day of February twenty twenty-two and also presented to the late State Senator and United States Congressman's wife Ruth Faywell as a sign of our deep appreciation and esteem. So signed Timothy King, Vice President, Board of Commissioners, and Rosa Escareño, interim General Superintendent and CEO. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved.
A second?
Second.
Will the secretary please take a roll call for the adoption of the resolution?
Of course. Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Netski?
Aye.
Commissioner Munoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Aye.
And Vice President King?
Aye.
Motion carried and the resolution is adopted.
Next, the approval of the, oh, congratulations is right. Next, approval of the meeting minutes from the regular meeting held on January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Will the secretary please take a roll call for the adoption of the minutes?
Yes, Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Netski?
Aye.
Commissioner Munoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Aye.
And Vice President King?
Aye.
Motion carried and the minutes are adopted.
And now we move on to acknowledging excellence, and I'm very excited that we have uh, two examples of acknowledging excellence at this month's meeting. Uh, first, we'll have a presentation from the interim General Superintendent on celebrating Black History Month in the parks.
Good morning. Uh, uh, thank you, um, Commissioners and Vice President King. Throughout the month of February, the Chicago Park District joins the entire nation in celebrating Black History Month. The accomplishments and contributions made by African-Americans have made an inedible impact in our world-class park system and in our city. Today, I would like to share, named in their honor, a slideshow highlighting the district's forty-six parks named in honor of African-Americans. Each of these individuals, in their own way, have inspired us and sparked positive change in the world around us. And today, these parks are in various parts of our city, and we ask the public to, um, visit them and learn about the history of African-Americans uh, and how they have made our lives better every day. The, the video features, uh, featured on the Chicago Park District website and is also, uh, being featured on our social media platforms throughout the entire month. In addition, the district will also host three regional events in celebration of Black History Month. And I ask, uh, you, uh, members of the board and patrons to join us either in person. Um, some are also in, uh, virtually. One being hosted at Foster Park. Um, that one will also be not just in person but virtually. There will also be an Austin Town Hall um, on February twenty-fourth and an in-person at Oyola Park on February twenty-seventh. Um, so we invite again the entire city to celebrate Black History Month, uh, in our parks. Um, and this is not just a celebration of these individuals, but really embracing our diversity and the many leaders and, um, that really make Chicago great. And I just want to take an opportunity today to also thank the many, um, employees that work at the Chicago Park District and honor all of our diversity, but certainly, uh, uh, our employees uh, who are African-American, want to make sure that they are also, uh, feel empowered and embraced throughout this month. And so I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity and want you to know that for us, this is very important during, during this time of healing. Um, as we come out of a pandemic, we want people to come out and really, uh, celebrate with us this such an important month. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, I just wanted to make a quick comment. Thank you. Yeah, Rosa, this is beautiful. Thank you. I was at the mayor's reception last night to honor Black History Month, and this really is a great example for many of our young people um, who strive to be leaders, and there are so many more we could be honoring. If there's a way we could have a link, I would love to share this with my staff and also with, um, um, on my social media platform. It's something to be proud of.
Absolutely. We'll make sure that all of the, uh, commissioners, all the members have a, a link, and I think you're absolutely right. What's really, uh, important for us is that all the young people that visit our parks know not just that the parks, uh, the name, but also to know what these individuals, um, how they've contributed to the growth and success of our nation and our city.
Thank you, Rosa, uh, for highlighting this and for sharing this rich and beautiful history. I do, you know, want to also underscore the deep importance of having our young people exposed to the rich and beautiful history, uh, uh, that you are sharing, and I would love to share this as, on as well.
And you did say that it's on the, um, web, Park District's website, right? And social media already?
Yes, we are, uh, certainly sending i- it out, and I also just want to give kudos to our team who always are very creative and thinking of ways to constantly make sure that we are uh, sharing these, these wonderful attributes that we have at our parks, including the history that so many of our parks, um, have. So kudos to the communications team who also put this together and, um, we will make sure that they are linking to all of you, even though it's already on our, on our social media and website. We'll share it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Next, under acknowledging excellence, the National Recreation and Park Association Gold Medal finalist award and presentation. I think we're gonna hear from Nikki Ginger.
Good afternoon, Vice President King, Board of Commissioners and Interim Superintendent. It is my honor to share that the Chicago Park District was selected by the American Academy for Park and Recreation Administration as the National Recreation and Park Association Gold Medal finalist. Our local representative, Carrie Fullerton, could not be here today, but has created a brief video that I would like to share.
Hi there. I am Carrie Fullerton, the Executive Director of the Arlington Heights Park District, and I am honored to be here today with you. I'm a huge fan of your park system and the outstanding numerous services and amenities that you provide. This is certainly one of my favorite responsibilities, um, as serving on the academy. So I'm here, as I suggested, to represent the American Academy for Park and Recreation Administration to present your National Gold Medal finalist plaque to your community. The National Gold Medal is the most coveted award in the park and recreation profession, honoring agencies and communities throughout the United States that exceed industry standards. Gold Medal finalist winners measure the impact and benefits of their services while addressing the community needs through the involvement of citizens, staff, and elected officials into all planning processes. Chicago Park District demonstrates excellence in long-range planning, putting vision into action each year, and we applaud and congratulate your team for your outstanding accomplishments. The American Academy for Park and Recreation, the governing organization for the National Gold Medal Award, consists of one hundred and twenty-five distinguished practitioners and scholars in the field who are committed to the advancement of the park and recreation field. Rooted in the desire to advance the knowledge, encourage scholarly efforts, and provide services to advance the profession, the academy embraces the opportunities to raise the bar and enhance the quality of park and recreation services to the local community through the National Gold Medal Awards Program. Since the awards inception in nineteen sixty-five, class one, population four hundred thousand one and over, there has been as few as twenty-five, two hundred and seventy-five agencies named as a gold medal finalist. The Chicago Park District demonstrated significant success with the design and delivery of superior services to the community and was named a finalist. And we are delighted to be a part of the local acknowledgement of this prestigious award. So on behalf of the American Academy for Park and Recreation Administration, Musco Lighting, and the National Recreation and Park Association, we congratulate you on your success.
Excellent. Thank you very much, uh, for th- that presentation. Nikki, are there any, uh, comments, questions from the commissioners regarding that? We're always so impressed by all the work the Park District is, is, does, so, you know, tho- that medal is deserved, or being a finalist is deserve that plaque, as well as all the medals that they have. So congratulations to the team.
Yeah, I second that. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you for all your hard work and everything you did to earn that medal.
Congratulations, everyone.
Under presentations from departments, there is nothing to present. Under communication and reports, there is also nothing to present. Next is the people in the parks section. Will the secretary please call the names of those who have signed up to speak?
We ask that you please limit your comments to two minutes. We also ask that those making comments before the board, please lower your electronic devices, including television, so that we can hear you clearly and do not experience any frequency interference. Um, our first two speakers who have signed up to speak are Louise McCurry and Kevin McGurn. And we'll get our first speaker on the line, Louise McCurry.
Whoa.
Good morning. Is this Louise?
This is Louise. Good morning.
Good morning. You're live at the Chicago Park District Board meeting. You may present your comments to the board now.
Thank you.
Louise, did we lose you?
Good morning, Commissioners. First, I want to congratulate you on another wonderful gold medal award winner. Uh, the, an outstanding park that, that perks that we are making a big difference to people who think about moving in Chicago. Second, I want to say thank you to our, all of our community members who are now using the Bopkins track and field. Thank you for our wonderful new track and field. People are using it and enjoying it. And then second, uh, one of the things that's happened and become very popular in Chicago is pickleball. Many, many seniors come to play at Jackson Park, they play at the Fieldhouse, thanks to the really excellent coach and our park supervisor, Bobby Beckham. We use the gym to play during the winter, uh, but during the warm weather, seniors need access to an outdoor pickleball court that are safe, that are accessible, and most important, they're close to bathrooms. The tennis courts that are beside the Fieldhouse are safe and accessible and close to the Fieldhouse bathrooms. They would be great outdoor pickleball, uh, courts, except that they're overgrown with invasive species trees and that are infighting the fences and that have taken over the court forever and have several cracks and holes in the courts themselves. These courts have sat unused for twenty years. They attract litter and vandalism. And as more people move into the surrounding community, the demand for more safe sites for senior recreation grows. Could we patch these court holes and remove the blocking perimeter trees and activate these courts so that our park seniors could play pickleball here in the warm weather?
30 seconds remaining.
Can be trained by our excellent coach, Bobby Beckham. And this could increase senior wellness and fitness and more importantly, increase community engagement in Jackson Park. Thank you for listening and congratulations on the award. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Louise. We'll release you from the call and you can rejoin the meeting through one of those links provided. And we'll get our next speaker on the line, Kevin McGurn.
Hello, it's Kevin.
Hi, Kevin, good morning. You're live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting. You may present your comments to the board now.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President, Vice President King, the Board of Commissioners, Interim Superintendent Esquerino, Mr. Art Richardson, Ms. Maria Stone, and all gathered today. I'm Kevin McGurn. And in November of last year, we submitted a proposal to the Chicago Park District to rename Passion Park at 1932 West Lunt Avenue in honor of the Pollard family. The Pollard family lived next to the park for over 60 years, and their accomplishments in the face of adversity were superior. While our time here today doesn't allow us to detail those, it's sufficient to say they reached local, national, and international excellence. Excuse me. Our proposal is based on the belief that their accomplishments can inspire present and future generations. Since we announced our proposal in November, our effort has been covered in magazines, on television, and online media. We've collected 692 signatures on a petition in favor of it and have not witnessed any opposition to it, either inside or outside the neighborhood. We also enjoy local aldermanics support, support from academics studying individual Pollard siblings, and support from descendants of the Pollard family. We have commitments of support from several more representatives who are waiting for the public comment period to begin.
30 seconds remaining.
With all of that in mind, I'm here today as a representative of the group that submitted the proposal to ask that the Chicago Park District schedule this on their agenda and then commence hearings and a public comment period. We look forward to working with you to honor our families so deserving, the Pollard family. Thank you sincerely for your time today. That's it.
Thank you, Kevin. We'll release you from the call at this time, and you can rejoin the meeting through one of those links provided. Our next two speakers who have signed up to speak are George Blakemore and May Toy. And we'll get our next speaker on the line, George Blakemore. It's ringing? Okay, we got no answer. We'll try one more time. Okay, we're not getting an answer. We'll move on to our next speaker, May Toy, for the time being. And please let the record reflect that May has submitted supporting documents, which you can find in your board packets. And we'll get May on the line.
Hello?
Hi, good morning, is this May?
Yes, hi, this is Allright.
Hi, May. You're live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting, and you can present your comments to the board now.
Thank you. Hi, my name is May Toy. I'm president of Skinner Park Advisory Council. And I did send written documents and it's a part of my testimony today. Of course, I'd like to thank, you know, everybody at the Park District who reached out to me, you know, as I recover from my accident. It's greatly appreciated. I would like to address things I sent in my document today. One is we are working with Alma Burnett, and he also asked me to forward the letter which is attached to Interim Superintendent Esquerino and to the Board of Commissioners requesting that we move forward with ADA accessible improvements and needs for the garden areas. And two is that we need to move forward on the Fieldhouse. You can see from the documents, we're in the central west tip, which is about to expire in two years. And we are at risk of losing ability to tap those funds, which our community has paid into for basically 21 years if we don't act now. And so I'm asking that we immediately, the Park District should immediately assign a project manager. I brought up this issue, you know, I think two years ago, and the Park District had met with us and agreed that there is a need for these improvements. I didn't make the ADA accessible parts for the park letter for accessibility.
30 seconds remaining.
Thanks. And the last thing I want to do is, is address the issue that I raised about equities in the community garden part. I think that the Park District said they will not look into adding more funding to that program. I haven't heard anything back, and I would like to get an update on that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, May. We'll release you from the call, and you can rejoin the meeting through one of those links provided. And that was our final speaker today. Please let the record reflect that Megan Bairdner, Tom Bianca, Talia Leopold, and Matthew O'Brien have submitted written testimony, which you may find in your board packets.
Thank you to our speakers. Your comments have been received, and someone will be reaching out to you to address your concerns. We will now proceed with the remaining agenda items for today. Under unfinished business, there is nothing to report, to present. And first, under new business from the Chief Financial Officer, supplemental appropriation ordinance of the Chicago Park District for additional 2021 revenues and expenditures. Our Chief Financial Officer, Steve Lux, will, will address the board.
Thank you, Vice President King. So this is the matter that was discussed at the public hearing prior to the regular board meeting, with requesting approval to amend the 2021 budget for the pension payment that was required under the state legislation of $40 million. Are there any questions?
I believe all of the commissioners were present for that public hearing. So are there any, there were no questions there? Are there any additional questions or any questions that have come up since then from the commissioners? If not, may I ask for a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Will the secretary please take a roll call for the adoption of the matter?
Commissioner Edwards? Commissioner Edwards, you might be muted.
I'm muted, aye.
Commissioner Netski?
Aye.
Commissioner Munoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Vae?
Aye.
And Vice President King?
Aye.
Motion carried and the matter is adopted.
Next, also from the Chief Financial Officer, a resolution authorizing the reimbursement of expenditures.
So before you today is a request that is made annually to approve a resolution which is required by the Code of the Internal Revenue Service for tax-exempt financing. Essentially, the resolution acknowledges that the district has a capital improvement plan for 2022 in the amount of $33 million, and that the district finances its capital plan using tax-exempt bonds that are typically issued at a later date. The RS requires the governing body to officially acknowledge it is the intent of that body to allow reimbursement from the proceeds of a tax-exempt bond. This official intent allows us to later reimburse ourselves from our operating funds, which advance the monies for the capital assets. In addition, the approval will allow the Capital Planning Department and the Budget Office to identify projects to be loaded in the budget system and start the procurement process. This resolution does not give the district the authority to issue the bonds. Instead, I will come back to the board at a later date, asking for that approval. Are there any questions?
If there are no questions, may I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Will the secretary please take a roll call for the adoption of this matter?
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Netski?
Aye.
Commissioner Munoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Vae?
Aye.
And Vice President King?
Aye.
Motion carried and the matter is adopted.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve.
Next, from Community Recreation Authorization to Enter Into a Contract with Palos Sports, Inc. for the Supply and Delivery of Sporting Goods, specification number P-21008.
Good afternoon, Vice President King, Commissioners, Interim Superintendent and CEO Esquerino. My name is Daphne Johnson, and I am the Deputy Chief Program Officer with the Park District. It is recommended that an order be entered authorizing the general superintendent or his designee to enter into contracts with Palos Sports Incorporated for supply or delivery of sporting goods. This contractor was selected pursuant to a publicly advertised invitation for bids. No work may commence and no payment shall be made to contract, to the contract prior to the execution of a written agreement. This contract is for the supply and delivery of sporting goods district-wide. This will enable us to purchase equipment that will be used throughout our 600-plus parks and play lots. Palos Sports is the incumbent. This is a one-year agreement with three one-year options, not to exceed $942,135.10. The MWBE is 25 and 5. I am happy to answer any questions.
Are there any? Yeah, how did the, they're an incumbent, right? So how did they do with their MWBE goals in the past?
All right, good afternoon, Vice President King, Board of Commissioners, Interim Superintendent Esquerino, my name is Mark Reed, Director of Purchasing. As Daphne stated, this Palos Sports is the incumbent. In their previous contract, Palos did meet our goals of 25 and 5 throughout the contract period, and throughout this period, they also committed to our 25 and 5 compliance requirement.
If there are no further questions, may I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Will the secretary please take a roll call for the adoption of this matter?
Yes, Commissioner Edwards? Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Netski?
Aye.
Commissioner Munoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Vae?
Aye.
And Vice President King?
Aye.
Motion carried and the matter is adopted.
Thank you. Next, from the Director of Cultural and Natural Resources Authorization to Enter Into a Contract with Cardinal USA, Inc. for Natural Area Services and Aquatic Management Services, specification number P-21011.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Esquerino, Vice President King and Commissioners. I'm Kathy Breitenbach. I'm the Director of Cultural and Natural Resources. I'm here to recommend that the interim General Superintendent and CEO, or her designee, enter into a contract with Cardinal USA, Inc. for Natural Area Services and Aquatic Management Services, including for the purpose of providing ecological restoration services throughout the Chicago Park District. Before I describe the details of the contract, I'd like to provide you with a brief overview of our natural areas program. The map that you currently see on your screen shows natural areas and aquatic features throughout the city, including habitat types such as prairies, woodlands, beach dunes, and nature gardens that use native plants in a more formal setting. Clockwise from the top left on your screen, you can see the Prairie River, Prairie River and Lagoon in Humble Park, an American Goldfinch enjoying the lagoon in Marquette Park, a bike park feature in Big Marsh Park, a gathering space designed by local artists in the Burnham Wildlife Corridor in Burnham Park, the fishing program at Northerly Island Park, and the Montrose Beach Dunes, which are home to our famous piping clovers in Chicago, Monte and Rose. Next slide, please. The natural areas program has grown significantly in the last decade. We currently have nearly 2,000 acres of natural area in 138 distinct sites throughout 74 parks around the city. 31 of these sites also host lagoons, wetlands, and marshes, I'm sorry, 28. These natural areas around the city provide, of course, important habitat for wildlife. They also provide ecosystem services, such as reducing flooding or reducing the urban heat island impact, and they provide important opportunities for Chicago kids and families to enjoy and learn about nature right in their own communities. Next slide, please. We manage our natural areas through a combination of in-house staff and contractor support. The contract before you today was, is for providing maintenance services citywide and also for new natural areas. The contractor was selected by a committee through a publicly advertised request for proposals. The RFP allowed companies to submit proposals on the full scope or on either the land management or aquatic management parts of the contract. Cardinal is the incumbent for the natural areas portion of the contract, and we've been very happy with their performance. They have not previously held the aquatic management portion, but they provided a very strong proposal. The not-to-exceed value for the initial two-year term of this contract is $10,487,528. Of this amount, about $3 million is from our corporate budget for maintenance of our natural areas. The balance of those funds are for grant-funded projects to establish new natural areas. The MWBE and WBE participation is 25 and 5%. And I should mention that in their previous contract term, Cardinal exceeded these goals. They've also done quite a bit of work with us on local recruiting for jobs, attending job fairs at local universities and city colleges. And in addition to their MWBE participation, they've subcontracted to Green Corps Chicago, a local job training program run by the city. In fact, in the last contract, they hired 33 graduates of that program. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I love the Green Corps program. I've sent many individuals through that program. This may not be an appropriate question for here, but is, is this a budget amount sufficient? Are we maintaining or are we actually expanding our maintenance of our parks here?
We do have the resources that before you to do the work we need to do. This program has grown quite a bit. I didn't mention, and we've done a lot with grant funding. Over the last several years, I think we've brought in over 15 million in grant funding. So I gotta give some kudos to our, our team that works on this, on this project. It's been a really fabulous program to be a part of.
And then how do we make sure that the investment we put in are, are really being maintained to the best possibly standard?
Sure. We have a professional team on our staff, an assistant director and project managers who run the contract, go out and inspect our sites, work with the contract staff to make sure that they're meeting our standards and specification. It's a performance-based contract. So it's not like we tell them, go plant X number of plants. We make sure that the plants are thriving and that the, the diversity of the sites is well-established.
Thank you. I have experienced all those areas, and I look forward to doing it. We have a little tease this morning of warm weather, and I hope we'll have it soon again. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's gonna get worse before it gets better, Commissioner, but enjoy it today while you can. Are there any other questions or comments?
Just a comment about the opportunities for jobs within the community. I think that that should be the standard for all of our contracts, to be very honest. So I'm very encouraged by that.
And if there are no additional questions or comments, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Will the secretary please take a roll call for the adoption of this matter?
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Netski?
Aye.
Commissioner Munoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Vaeh?
Aye.
And Vice President King?
Aye.
Motion carried and the matter is adopted.
Next, from the Director of Planning and Construction Authorization for Change Order Number Zero Two, not to exceed $798,585.2 to Friedler Construction Company for Seward Park Fieldhouse Restoration, specification number P-16008-036. I think we're going to hear from Heather.
All right. Good afternoon, Vice President King, Interim Superintendent Escareño, and members of the board, Heather Gleason, Director of Planning and Construction. As Vice President King mentioned, we are here for Seward Park and a change order with Friedler Construction Company. So if we could go to the next slide. So Seward Park is an existing 8.79-acre park located in the near North Side community area at 375 West Elm Street. Next slide, Sarah. So this is the aerial of Seward Park. For context, Division Street is to your north in this image, and North Orleans is to the east. Seward Park and Fieldhouse were built in 1908 by the Lincoln Park Commission. Next slide, please. And these are just some images of Seward Park, just some interesting details about the building. These mosaics are one of its most distinctive features, I think. Some of them were actually done by children in our Park Ceramics program back in 1999, the one on the top right there. And there's also an attractive fountain in the middle of the park at the front entrance when you walk in, and there's also a dance floor image there that you can see the wooden trusses that make up the roof of that particular part of the building. So I thought I would show you the great pictures before we go to the next slide, and I'll tell you why we're here today. So we were luckily able to secure a $4 million TIF allocation from the city to undertake a major rehab of this particular field house. The improvements include repairing concrete and masonry, new doors, new roof and gutters, improving plumbing infrastructure, doing some accessibility upgrades, and other related exterior repairs, and we are also replacing the playgrounds on this particular park. So the change order work before you entails extensive repair and replacement of deteriorated infrastructure that was discovered during demolition that would not have been known at the time that the construction documents were created, really until we opened up walls and floors and excavated, excavation started, we started running into challenges that you see on these images here. And they sort of fall into four general categories here. So that first image that you're seeing is buried utilities. So we had an exterior stormwater system and buried utilities that really caused some challenges. We had initially investigated 14 different roof drains, and we thought that we would be able to do limited repairs. However, once we started opening these things up, we realized that they were in such a deteriorated condition that we really needed to do a full replacement. And the way that my staff explained it to me is it's sort of a spider web of utilities around the building. So once we started looking at the plumbing, it's not possible to sort of use a big machine to get in there and make these repairs. We had this web of different utilities under the ground that necessitated hand digging, and that's part of what's in the change order that is before you today. So once we are able to do this work, we will, of course, restore the whole park and landscape, make sure the paving is back in place that was necessitated by this excavation. The second thing that we ran into were some challenges with plumbing. So our interior plumbing was in severe deterioration. When we opened the walls, you know, we saw even more challenges, some code issues, obsolete plumbing, missing vents that would be required under today's code standards. And another condition that you can see, that sort of top image, I don't know if you can tell, but our electrical room, actually, when we get heavy rains and things, gets flooded. So electricity and water, not a good idea, so that is something that we really need to fix here. Also, we needed to make accessibility improvements and add an elevator, and so that type, top right image that you're seeing, that was, is where the elevator is going. Under our initial investigation, we thought it would fit right into that space, but it turns out that the walls were actually not even, so they were sort of out of plum, and we needed to do some additional work to make sure that the elevator was secure, and that's part of what's in this change order as well. And then the last thing that you see in the bottom picture there, as we started doing work on the building, we realized that we were seeing all of this sort of, we'll call it bird contamination around the building. There were a lot of birds that were nesting in the upper loft areas, and really made a lot of the railings and things sort of contaminated for the public to use. And so we are also installing, as part of this change order, a bird deterrent system that does not harm the birds in any way, but it has been successful in a lot of other historic projects. We have used it in the Park District at Columbus Park Refectory, the Douglas Park Flower Hall, and Humboldt Park, but it's also a system that's used on the Statue of Liberty in New York, in Independence Hall in Philadelphia. So it's a safe system for birds, but also deters them, allows the public to enjoy the space. So again, the circumstances necessitating the contract modification were not reasonable, foreseeable at the time we started the contract, and we're, you know, we believe after working with the contractor that these charges are reasonable. The contract itself with this change order will remain in the 25 and 5% MWBE in total. With that, I'm happy to take your questions.
Heather, I love your job. I'm glad that we're restoring all these historical buildings. Do we have like a long-range planned of capital improvements like this that I would love to see?
Yes, so we have a number of historic buildings, and we, yeah, we're happy to get you more information on how we approach these. One of the things that we, that we apply for, so like Kathy was talking about, the success in grants for natural areas, we have been able to get money from the state or money from the city to take care of what we call our park treasures, really. These buildings are, they're historic, they're beautiful, they serve so many people and so many purposes, and so we're able to usually get grant money to help us fix them up, and when they're historic, we can sometimes get state credits as well for us to be able to do some work on these buildings. So it's a really important part of our job, and we're proud to do it and make it reusable for the community.
Well, kudos to you and your team. The other big question, and maybe offline, I find that sometimes after you restore a building and bring it back to its glory, how do you train the staff that are there who use the building to maintain it properly, to use correct agents for cleaning when they, and do preventative care of the facility?
That's a great question. Thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, we actually do a pretty extensive turnover to staff, so that if we're putting in a new elevator, for instance, there'll be a maintenance manual. So my team on the Capitol side partners with Bob Arlo's team and facilities, as well as any of the Park staff, Daphne's staff in the regions, to be able to make sure that once we put these things in, staff knows how to use them and how to maintain them. So that is definitely a big part of our turnover process, once these projects are done, so that we can make sure we're carrying them forward properly.
Great, thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? Great. Will the secretary please take a roll call for the adoption of this matter?
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Netski?
Aye.
Commissioner Munoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Vaeh?
Aye.
And Vice President King?
Aye.
Motion carried and the matter is adopted.
Thank you.
Next, also from the Director of Planning and Construction, request to officially name Gately Park Track and Field Center in honor of Dr. Conrad Worrell.
Right, thank you again. Yes, we're really happy to be able to bring this forward. We took the original naming in July, actually, of last summer, and so this is the official request after having the 45-day comment period open and lots of support letters to finally name this park in honor of Dr. Conrad Worrell. And before I get started on the slides, I did want to mention that we're honored to have Dr. Femi Skenes, Dr. Worrell's daughter, and Oscar Worrell, Dr. Worrell's brother, who would like to address the board following my presentation, so I'll try to make mine quick so that we can hear from them. Next slide, please. So just to remind everyone where Gately is, it's located at 74, 744 East 103rd Street in the Pullman Community Area in the 8th Ward. Next slide. And this aerial just shows where Gately Park is. The actual field house is in that upper left-hand corner of the park. Next slide, please. And these are just some images of our finished track and field center, which we're very proud of. We completed the track and field center in 2020. It was a $56 million investment in the Pullman Community Area, and as you will see here shortly, this project was strongly supported by Dr. Worrell and would not likely have been possible without his constant advocacy for this project. Next slide, please. So this slide shows many images of Dr. Worrell. Dr. Conrad Worrell was born in 1941, a lifelong activist and educator, and sadly passed away on June 3 of 2020. His legacy of untiring and passionate advocacy, however, will continue to inspire generations to come. Dr. Worrell was born in Pasadena, but moved with his family to Chicago at the age of nine and spent the rest of his life here. As a youth, he participated in several sports, including track and field, but the scare heckling that he and his all-black swim team experienced was cited as being the genesis of the racial consciousness that would become his life's work. After returning to Chicago after serving in the Army, he attended George Williams College, where he became an active member of the Black Power Movement, among other organizations examining civil rights and their relationship to the war. Dr. Worrell went on to earn a master's degree in social service administration from the University of Chicago and a doctorate from the University of Wisconsin-Madison. Dr. Worrell was hired by Northeastern Illinois University, where he taught for the next 40 years until his retirement in 2016. While there, he eventually led the Carruthers Center for Inner City Studies. His academic achievement went hand in hand with his achievements in the arena of social activism and racial equality. While working throughout his life with numerous organizations, some of the most visible of Dr. Worrell's handiwork has been assisting in the election of Chicago's first black mayor, Harold Washington. He also traveled to Geneva, Switzerland to formally charge the US with genocide and human rights violations, and served as a special consultant to the 1995 Million Man March. Whether on a local or a global scale, his work has advanced understanding in the areas of inclusive curricula, education restructuring, reparations, and political and economic empowerment for the Black community. Dr. Worrell also continued to espouse his relationship between athletic opportunities and academic achievement for young people. He worked through the years to document and uplift the historic roles and contributions of Black people in the development of basketball, and coming from a family of track runners and being a high school track star himself, he long championed the revitalization of track and field for students of Chicago Public Schools, particularly advocating for the development of a track and field facility on the South Side. The new indoor track and field center at Gately Park is in no small part a direct result of his tireless dedication to this idea. It's a fitting tribute to name the facility the Dr. Conrad Worrell Track and Field Center. The naming is supported by Alderman Harris, several state senators and representatives, as well as his family and many community members. Dr. Worrell was very much a part, also just from, personal from the staff of planning this project. We met with him many, many times as we were working through it and making, lining up funding to do it. He was really an integral part of the project, and we're really, really glad that he was able to take a tour of the facility while it was under construction. It saddened us greatly that we couldn't complete it before his passing, but we are really honored to bring this before you today. And then, Sarah, I think that concludes my presentation. If we want to hear from the family members, I'll stand down.
Thank you so much, Heather. We're going to get Dr. Worrell's brother, Oscar Worrell, on the line first, and then we have his daughter, Dr. Skenes, on video with us, but we'll get Oscar on the line first. Hi, Oscar. Thank you so much for joining us today. We're live at this Chicago Park District Board meeting, and we'd love to hear from you now. We just got through the presentation on renaming the facility officially after Dr. Conrad Worrell. Thanks so much for coming.
Thank you, Board of Directors, General Superintendent, Chicago Park District. I am the baby brother of my big brother, Dr. Conrad Worrell, and I'm here to thank the Chicago Park District and its kind consideration for my brother's tireless work to have this structure built for the future of our young people in the track and field industry, as we would say it today. My brother, Professor Emeritus and Director Emeritus of Northeastern Illinois University, brother's Inner City Studies, and the Chairman Emeritus of the National Black United Front, and the founder of the Friends of Track and Field. On behalf of our parents, Annabelle and Walter Worrell, and the family itself, we thank the Chicago Park District for its kind consideration to name this awesome structure in the name of my brother, Dr. Conrad Worrell. I want to give special thanks at this particular time to Alderman, Michelle Harris, friend and colleague, and my brother's Alderman, and her tireless efforts to support my brother, Dr. Conrad Worrell, in this magnificent construction of this building. And for a personal note, as an inspector for the last 34 years with the Department of Water Management, I personally saw the construction of this magnificent building for the future of our youth in track and field. So the Friends of Track and Field, which my brother is the founder of, its mission to revitalize track and field in the Chicago community, which would include public and private schools, their aim is to help student athletes reach their athletic, academic, and life goals. So thank you so much, Board of Directors, General Superintendent, and the staff of the Chicago Park District, and its kind consideration. For my deceased, loved brother, may he rest in peace with our ancestors. Thank you so much.
And then I think, Heather, you said that we are gonna also hear from his daughter, Dr.
Yes, Dr. Skenes is on, so if you're ready, you can unmute and go ahead, and then I think our Superintendent Rosa Escareño is going to say a few words as well at the end. Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Skenes. I think we still have you muted. It's not working? Okay. I'm going to call, but you can stay on the, on the line if that's all right. You may just want to mute your computer.
Okay, that should be better. Sorry, it's not unmuted. Oh, well, good afternoon, everybody. You've heard from my uncle, Oscar Worrell. I'm Femi Worrell Skenes. I am the second-born daughter of Dr. Conrad Worrell. On behalf of our entire family, we are especially honored to accept this acknowledgement. My dad's wife, Taliba Worrell, offers these words. She says that it is with gratitude and appreciation to all who have worked tediously to support my husband's vision that I write this note. I am sure that Conrad is pleased. Keep up the good works and God bless. For those of you all who had an opportunity to hear my dad's vision and to hear him discuss his ideas for the indoor track and field stadium, he would tell stories of his displeasure with the fact that students in Chicago had to practice for track in the hallways of schools. My dad attended High Park High School, and he would also tell stories of his days of having to run in the halls of High Park. In fact, he despised the fact that our children did not have an adequate facility to help them hone their track and field skills. As a result, he took his idea and his passion, and he lobbied for the City of Chicago to invest in building a track and field stadium. After years of advocacy, his dream became a reality. Before his earthly transition, he would burst with pride when he talked about the new track and field stadium. I'm sure that Conrad is pleased. about the new track and field stadium. Although he did not get a chance to see children run on the track, he did have an opportunity to see the building near completion. He was proud, and he would share that with anyone who would listen. As we all know, that the month of February has been designated as Black History Month. We also see this as the perfect opportunity to recognize my dad's vision, his passion, and his advocacy. I'm certain that he's sitting with the ancestors right now, beaming with pride. Naming this facility in his honor will continue to keep his memory and his vision alive. As young people from all over the city of Chicago run on this track, it is our hope that they will never, ever forget how our dad worked tirelessly to make a high quality track and field experience possible for them. It is our hope that they will use their gifts and their talents as athletes to better themselves and to better their entire community. Today is a proud day for us. On behalf of me, on behalf of my sisters, our entire family, and the entire Pan-African community, we sincerely thank you all for honoring my dad's legacy, our dad's legacy, in such a tremendous way.
Thank you so much. That was wonderful to hear from the family. So we really appreciate both you and your uncle being here with us today to give those remarks. With that, that concludes my presentation. If Commissioners have questions, we're happy to take them.
And I believe Rosa is gonna say a few words before we make a motion.
That's super brief. I just want to say that certainly very, very proud that the Park District is so involved in communities in this way. And to be able to honor a local hero during this Black History Month is extra special. My comment here today is really to just say that while today we are taking advantage of the naming, we look forward to working with the family and the members of the board to actually be at the location present to honor the their location in person as soon as we are able to. So I just wanted to make that statement, that happy that we're doing this virtually. And it couldn't be better timing because of the significance of our local hero during this special month, but that I certainly want to work with the family to ensure that we're properly going out and doing a, you know, a presentation of the naming at the facility. So thank you so much to the family. We're extremely proud to be working alongside you to make this a reality for the community and such a wonderful gift to not only the residents, but the many people that are going to be able to use this as a facility for competition, the very the very sport that he so endeared. So thank you so much.
Thanks. Thanks, everyone. I just would like to make a comment. I'm extraordinarily proud right now to be able to be leading the Board of Commissioners at a time when we're doing this very important thing. I'm a firm believer in the adage, when you when you touch one life, you save the world and you change many. You don't know this, but your grandfather was a was a friend and mentor of my father's. So my father, Paul King, was mentored by Walter, who I believe is your granddad. And I just, I love seeing things kind of come full circle and to see the idea that your granddad was able to, Conrad's father was able to impact my father, and my father was able to impact me. And now here we are now with this naming impacting literally thousands and thousands of young people in the city of Chicago. And it really just goes to speak to how how tight and close-knit Chicago is, and how important family is, and how important relationships and mentoring are. Because certainly the work that Conrad did, the work that you're doing, the work that your your granddad did, all of that really has played an important part in what the city of Chicago is. And and the fact that we're able to honor Conrad in this way is just is just fantastic. I'm just incredibly proud. I have very little to do with it, but I'm very proud of being here at the table when it's happening. And I got to see him speak at the groundbreaking. And I am also sorry that he's not here for this actual naming, but we know that his legacy is gonna live on through you and through the park and through the the track and everything that's happening. So thank you very much for allowing us to celebrate your dad, your brother, in this way.
I would add that, Tim, absolutely. Today is a proud day for our city. It's a proud day for our children. It's a proud day for the Park District. And this is the way you honor Black History Month. This truly says that black lives matter, and this is inspiring. Thank you.
And I'll build on that a little bit. Dr. Skenes, thank you for being here, you and your brother, I mean, you and your uncle. This is so incredibly beautiful and heartfelt. And I am so proud to be a part of the Board of Commissioners today in honor of your father. And I want to thank you also for the gift of your father, his service, and his advocacy on behalf of making this happen for our city and for our children. Thank you so much. And thank you for the work that you are leading at Morgan Park as well. Thank you.
Absolutely. And with that said, is there a motion?
There's a big motion, yes.
And a second?
Second.
Excellent. Will the Secretary please take a roll call for the adoption of this matter?
I sure will. Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Commissioner Netski.
Aye.
Commissioner Munoz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Aye.
Commissioner Vaeh.
Aye.
And Vice President King.
Aye.
Motion carried and the matter is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you so, so very much. Okay, and last on our agenda under new business is the election of the president to the Chicago Park District Board of Commissioners. I would like to, I'm supposed to say, is there a nomination? But yes, there is a nomination. I'm gonna do the nominating. So I don't know if that's appropriate, but I'm gonna do it. So we gonna just deal with it. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Hamilton. Commissioner Hamilton was appointed to the Board of Commissioners this past October, and she brings more than 25 years of experience in the public sector to the Chicago Park District Board of Commissioners. As Executive Director for City Year Chicago, she leads the largest site of AmeriCorps members across the organization. Commissioner Hamilton has dedicated her life's work to our city, serving over 18 years at Chicago Public Schools in various roles, including Deputy Chief of Staff in the CEO's Office and Chief of School Support for the District. Commissioner Hamilton's work is a direct reflection of her dedication to Chicago's children, families, and communities. It is for those reasons that I am proud, happy, thrilled to nominate Commissioner Hamilton to the Office of President. And with that, I'd ask, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Will the Secretary please take a roll call for the adoption of that matter?
Yes, I will. Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Commissioner Netski.
Aye.
Mr. Munoz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Aye.
Go ahead, vote for yourself.
Commissioner Vaeh.
Aye.
And Vice President King.
Aye.
Motion carried and the matter is adopted. Commissioner Hamilton is elected to serve as president to fulfill the term until the next annual meeting. Congratulations.
Commissioner President-elect Hamilton, would you like to say anything before we adjourn?
Yes, Vice President King, I just want to begin by thanking the Board of Commissioners just for your trust and for this nomination. I enthusiastically accept this nomination during this time. I want to share just a couple of things quickly. As a South Side native and as a mother of teenage girls, I know firsthand the critical importance of our parks, the role that our programs play within our communities to strengthening strengthen our communities. And I also know that our parks serve as safe havens for so many young people, especially those living in our most marginalized communities. And it is with great honor that I accept this nomination as Board President to lead and to serve alongside this dedicated Board of Commissioners, to lead and to serve alongside our talented and dedicated staff at the parks, our community members, Mayor Lightfoot, and other civic leaders. I believe that this is a rare opportunity for us. It's an opportunity in a time of change and to forge a path forward in restoring trust and also advancing equity across our parks that will bring empowerment to our neighborhoods. And so with that, something that we believe in as a core value at City Year is service to a cause greater than self. And I answer this call enthusiastically, and I am ready to serve. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And with that, that concludes the board meeting for February. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any against? Motion carried. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all very, very much. Let's see.